Okay, good evening ladies and gentlemen. It's seven o'clock and as Mayor I hereby call to order meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for May 14th, 2018 at this hour. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Councilor Robert Hamel in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Here.
Councilor Bowns?
President.
Councilor Whitman?
Present.
Councilor Haynes?
Here.
Councilor Hamel?
Present.
Councilor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
Present. Let the record show that five councilors are present this evening. A quorum has been established for this meeting and Councilor Bowns gave previous notice he would not be here tonight, so that's an excused absence. Thank you. Note for the record also that the City Council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodham. We have a proclamation tonight. I'm going to come around front for that. More appropriately, I should have said we have a number of very special guests with us this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, our special guests this evening are none other but the top 10 academic students from the Laconia High School class of 2018. Welcome ladies and gentlemen. I do have a proclamation to read, which I'll do if you'll bear with me for a minute, and then we want to recognize each of you individually as well. Whereas Laconia High School has announced the names of the top 10 academic students in the 2018 graduating class. They are Benjamin Bellevue, Drew Muzzy, Thomas Bastus, Namanja Boskovic, Dakota Cross, Rebecca Howe, Isabella Lovering, Nina Caruso, Sophia Joyle, and John Thomas Turpin. Whereas the city recognizes that the future of our community lies in the initiative, dedication, and enthusiasm of our youth. And whereas in addition to the difficult academic work required to achieve this honor, these exemplary students have been involved in numerous extracurricular activities during their high school career, admirably representing Laconia High School and their community. And whereas as they go out into the world, we believe they are certain to continue to be the shining sons and daughters of Laconia and will well represent the best our city has to offer. And whereas the Laconia City Council, families and friends, along with sachems, young and old, would like to express our sincere appreciation for the accomplishments the top 10 graduating Laconia High School students have made for themselves, their school, and their community. Now therefore, I, Edward J. Engler, Mayor of the City of Laconia, do hereby proclaim today, Monday, May 14th, 2018, as Laconia High School Class of 2018 Top 10 Students Appreciation Day, and urge all citizens to join with the City Council in recognizing the outstanding achievements of these exceptional young men and women. Thank you. We appreciate all of you taking the time to come visit us tonight, and it is indeed our privilege to have you as our guests. And I know your schedules are very, very busy with that, not only with your classroom activities, but also with your extracurricular activities, so we very much appreciate your taking time to come and let the citizens of Laconia recognize you for your outstanding achievements. I do have recognitions here and a copy of the proclamation that I would like to give each of you, and so I'm going to introduce you individually. And if you would come up when your name is called, be happy to welcome you. I'm also going to say a few words about you. If I get any of this wrong, please correct me, okay? So this is, we're going to go in reverse order here. So the first certificate of recognition I have here is for John Thomas Turpin. He wasn't here when we started. Is he here? There he is. All right, come on up. Good to see you. He's got his baseball uniform on. Good, how'd the game go?
We won in extra innings.
All right, all right, good job. All right, Thomas is going to UNH, is that correct?
University of Vermont.
Vermont?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, he's changed his mind. And major in civil engineering?
Yep.
That's still correct?
Yep.
All right, so we've got a civil engineering student at UVM, and that is for you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Why don't you come in here? We're going to get a picture afterwards after we've introduced you all. Next up is a young lady that I have known since she was in middle school, I think probably, right? And that is Sophia Joyle. Sophia? Nice to see you, congratulations. And let's see, you're going to study nursing at UNH, is that still correct?
Yes.
Okay, great, terrific. And this is for you. Thank you, Sophia. Next up, we have Nina Caruso. Is Nina? Yes. Congratulations, thank you. Nina is going to UNH also, and what are you going to be studying?
Liberal arts.
Liberal arts, okay, great. And that is for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure we get the right one here. Next up, we have Isabella Lovering. Thank you for joining us tonight. And you're also going to UNH, is that correct? And let's see, what have I got here for your interests? Financial management? Is that right?
Yes, studying economics.
Economics, okay, very good, good choice. All right, this is for you, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hope I'm not butchering your name here, but next, wait a minute, did I miss somebody? Give me a half a second here. Yes, I did, sorry. Rebecca, Rebecca Howe. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The Hows have been here before, the lacrosse-playing Howe, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Right, yes, I think your sister's been standing up here with me a couple times before. And Rebecca is going to St. Bonaventure University in New York. Very good, interesting choice. And you're going to be playing lacrosse there as well, right? And studying health sciences, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, that's for you, thank you very much. Dakota Cross. Congratulations, and thank you for coming tonight. Dakota is going to Worcester Poly, right? I think more than one of you are.
Yeah.
All right, all right. So he won't be studying basket weaving at Worcester Poly, I don't think, no.
That's probably a club there.
Aerospace engineering, is that right? Oh, that is near and dear to my heart. My own daughter studied aerospace engineering in college, so that's, it's close to home for me. So this is for you, and we thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, now is a name I probably struggled with. Namanja?
Namanja.
Namanja, okay. Namanja Boskovic.
Yeah.
Yep, right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, and thanks for putting up with my butchering of your first name.
No, it's okay, happens more often than anything.
And you're going to UNH as well to study chemistry? All right, good luck to you, and this, grab that there, that's for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for joining us. Thomas Bastus, did I get that right? Close enough, Thomas? Thomas is the Ivy Leaguer in the group here. He's going to Cornell, right? To study computer science?
Yep.
Correct? All right, great, well, best of luck to you, and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
All right, we are to the salutatorium for the class of 2018, and that is Drew Muzzy. Hello, good to see you. Drew is going to be going to Bowden College, right?
Yep.
Runs with Maine, terrific, and going to be playing football there as well, are you? Well, that's great, and we're going to be studying what? I don't have it here.
Computer science.
Computer science, yes, right. So this is for you, and let me just add parenthetically here, hold on just a second, I think everybody probably in the room knows this. Give me a second here. Is the grandson of Armin Bolduk. And couldn't be more appropriate that you're here tonight, son, because later tonight on our agenda, we've got an initiative on our agenda to name this room in honor of your grandfather. So very appropriate that you're here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And now we come to the valedictorian of the class of 2018, Benjamin Beliveau. Congratulations, good job. So Benjamin is going to Worcester Poly as well, so two of you are going to Worcester Poly. And you're going to study engineering of some kind, I bet. Environmental?
Environmental and civil.
And civil both, okay. Well, congratulations to you, that's for you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. So we are, can you, you can see over that, right? So let me get in the middle of you here, and we'll get a picture. See everybody here, these stuff, there he goes. Come on up, if you want to get closer, that's fine. Anyone else need a picture? Okay, one last thing here. I want to get everybody at the council table to get a chance to congratulate you. You'll lead the way. You're going to come here, swing this way, single file, and let each of the people around the table congratulate you. You're a follower of Congress. You can come, let's come to the front. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Did you have track meet or something?
Yeah.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Did you just have track meet or something?
Yeah.
Good job.
We all just came from our.
Good job. Congratulations. Congratulations. Did you just have track meet or something?
Yeah.
Good job. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations.
Great job, good luck.
Good job. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job. Congratulations. Good luck. Congratulations. It's Sophia.
Sophia.
Okay, thank you again for taking time, like you're visiting, it's driving me crazy. Good job, Mayor.
I guess.
a tradition every year to have the top 10 students in, so we can congratulate them. And one last word I'd like to say for our audience on that is, and that is, I know the, every year they have a, they have a top 10 dinner for the last four or five years at Laconia High School for these, for these kids. And they each pick a teacher that had a major effect on their lives when they were at Laconia High School, and they take turns, and the student gets up and explains why that teacher has significant meaning to them, and then the teacher gets up and talks about the student, and they go through the top 10 students and whatnot. And the thing that comes through every year, I try to go every year to that, and I go again, I think it's Thursday night this week, and I'll be there again, is the role the parents play. And, you know, it's just, it just couldn't be more obvious that these kids are not only wonderful kids, and the teachers are wonderful too, but the amount of time and effort that their parents have put into their upbringing is obvious from all the comments that are made and whatnot. And so we have to, as well as appreciate the students, appreciate what a wonderful group of parents we have in our city as well. So congratulations to the students and the teachers, and especially congratulations to the parents. Okay, we are to minutes, if I can regain my composure here. We have two sets of minutes tonight to talk about. The first is the regular meeting minutes of April 23rd. Those minutes were distributed to the council on April 25th by the clerk. No changes were noted. And so in lieu of any changes at this point in time, speak now or forever hold your peace, I'm going to declare the minutes of our last meeting, regular meeting on April 23rd to be approved as submitted by the clerk. Then we are to the special meeting minutes that were, we elected Councilor Hosmer to represent Ward 6. And those minutes were, that meeting was held on April 30th. The minutes were distributed on May 1. No changes were suggested. And I'm going to declare then that the minutes to our special meeting on May, on April 30th are accepted as presented by the clerk. Consent and action items. Page 20, I don't know what happened, I guess that was, yeah, okay. There's two items on your agenda, but the first one was a mistake. We've already approved that. That was for the farmer's market in the city hall parking lot. We had already approved that, so we're going to skip over that one. Go to item number two, which is temporary traffic order number eight for a community blood drive. This is a repeat, that's why it's on the consent and action calendar, so a motion to be in order to approve temporary traffic order number eight, a community blood drive to be held June 2nd, 2018, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Bellnap Mill. So moved. By Councilor Hamel, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Cheney, second, so motion need discussion. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative that motion carries, thank you. We have a lot of interviews tonight, which is good news. Okay, first up, we're going to be talking about the planning board. We have three vacant alternate member positions on the planning board, and we have several applicants tonight, the first of which is Jay Forrester. Forrester, if you could come up, please. Before you get started here, give me a second to explain that per council rules and procedures. We typically interview candidates on the, at, on the first meeting of the month, and then we have the election on the second meeting of the month. So we will not be voting on any of these nominations tonight. We're happy to hear from you tonight, and we don't make appointments without an interview, but the election itself, you're not required, any of you candidates are not required to attend that, and most don't, and there's no reason to really, you're welcome to come if you want to at the next meeting, but it's not necessary. So Mr. Forrester is seeking an alternate member position on the planning board for a three-year term, and sir, if you would introduce yourself to us, tell us what ward you live in and explain why you would like to serve.
So my name is Jay Forrester. I live in, I think, Ward 6, which I live on Wears Boulevard. I think it's in Ward 6, I hope it is.
Seems we gave you a pop quiz here.
Yeah, yeah, I know, that's terrible. I've been living in Laconia for about three years.
Wears Boulevard is Ward 6.
Okay, that's, see, I'm good. I've been living in Laconia for about three years. I moved up here from Lenandere after vacationing here many times, so I do live here for most of the year. I spent my career as a developer. I retired once and came back. I basically developed data centers. I don't know if you guys actually know what those are, but the reality is, I do a lot of traveling to build those. So I spent some 20 years doing that and standing in front of committees like you guys a lot on the other side of the fence, trying to get my projects approved. I'm coming near retirement soon, and I was hoping that my career could assist the town potentially in providing some service. So that's why I'm here in front of you today.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Forrester? Councilor Hamel?
Mr. Forrester, have you served on any boards in any other city or whatever before?
I served on my own personal board at the condominium association that I live at, but no other boards, no.
No other boards.
Councilor Hamel. Hamel, I'm sorry, Councilor Whitman.
All right, don't insult him like that.
One time, the one time I remember his name, I'm looking at the wrong person.
Oh yeah, that's right, I gotta turn this around.
Yes, I'm just wondering, in terms of some of the projects, the data centers, were any of those in New Hampshire? So do you have a sense of New Hampshire law?
I worked for Fidelity Investments in New Hampshire for many, many years, probably somewhere around 10. So I do know a lot about New Hampshire law, because we did, we did build in New Hampshire and Merrimack, and, and in other places in New Hampshire. So I've done quite a bit for them, several campuses there. But most of my work has been across the US, and actually even abroad. I've done some stuff in Tokyo, and Japan, and Brazil, and other places like that, which don't come close to the US laws, believe me. So I do have a vast amount of experience in developing, and again, like standing in front of you guys like the other folks were tonight, and trying to get my projects approved. So I do know the process and the procedures. I can read drawings, I can do all the things that are necessary from a development standpoint, and if you consider me, I hope I'll do a great job.
Have you appeared before other planning boards?
Never have.
Representing a development?
Not, other planning boards in the US survey, but never this one.
Yeah.
I've never, I've never actually built anything in.
So what's your general observation about that experience?
Usually zoning boards and planning boards, and it's a process in every location, typically between three to six months in trying to get a project approved. Most of the time, it's, usually we try to meet with the township prior to buying property in the town, and try to get an idea of what they're looking for, and how we can help them out, both financially and economically to, you know, whether it's donating, however, what we can do to, to be good citizens, corporate citizens of the township. When it comes to specific zoning boards and planning boards, it's usually detail and drawings, civil drawings, civil, I usually hire local civil folks, local architect folks, sometimes plan, expeditors to assist me through the township requirements, because it's important to, every town is different. They all have different requirements on how they approve various projects. As being, the data centers I build are very large, they don't employ a bunch of people, they use a lot of power, and there's a lot of generation there, which comes into economics and air permitting and things of that nature. So not the best product for your town, good economic for bringing tax revenue, good economic for the clientele that comes, but not necessarily putting the citizens to work. So sometimes there's potential challenges to that.
Councilor Whitman? Just based on your past experience in the development that's, with the old state school property that's being considered in terms of just a professional perspective on it, we know, I know 911 Center is located nearby and within that campus in terms of the potential for development of data centers in our area? Do you have any perspective you could share on that?
The data center market is driven upon two things. Number one, the cost of electricity, and number two, the ability to get telecommunications bandwidth to a location. If you can do both of those things, it's very good economically for the folks that are coming to town. That is the key. The other thing is natural disasters, right? Nobody wants to build in, you wouldn't build in Hawaii right now, and so forth and so on. So natural disasters come into play. There is some data center in New Hampshire, several in fact, and would there be an opportunity to build in Laconia? Absolutely.
At one point, I know there was one considered by, in the Lakes Business Park as a potential project, didn't come to pass, but.
It's not unusual, and in locations like Laconia with a lot of capital of people, it's good, because data centers are looking for to cut down latency to your keypad, right? So if you can cut down in latency to the individual's keypad, folks like Amazon and Facebook and all the other fun people that really want to attack the individual love to be in the area, they do. So it's, it's good. You may like it, you may not. There will be generation, there will be air permitting, there will be things that you may not like in your town. It's one of those things where you have to kind of decide.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, very informative. Next up, same position, alternate member of the planning board, Sarah Jenna. Before I, before you get started, I think I, Mrs. Jenna, I think I speak for everyone on the City Council to say that we are very happy to see you up here again.
Oh, I thought you were going to tell me you were sick of seeing my face, so that's good.
No.
All right, good. So I think you already know I live in Ward 6, basically just trying to get more involved with the city and learning the processes, and that's why I'm here tonight, so.
Any questions for Mrs. Jenna?
We appreciate that you took us up on the offer of trying to find a way to get involved in the community, and appreciate that your perspective in terms of younger generation can come forward and give some, some perspective to the development of the community.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Everyone's nodding, so it's good to see you again, thank you for coming.
That's good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And the third member of the person from the public seeking an alternate position on the planning board, Brett Beliveau. Brett, there we are.
Good evening.
In relation to the gentleman that was here earlier?
Yes, that was my son, by the way.
All right, well, you're one of the parents who we're talking about.
So two birds with one stone tonight. I didn't even know it, I was volunteering helping at the track meet, and he told me, hey, I have a meeting at 7:00, and I said, yeah, so do I. Where's yours at? And he said, City Hall, and I said, all right, cool, well, carpool. So Brett Beliveau, I live in Ward 5. Moved here about 10 years ago after I retired from 21 years in the military. Started out in the military doing soils, asphalt, concrete, engineering-wise, mixed design and things like that, quality control on military construction projects. That evolved into including surveying and drafting with it, and as I progressed in my career into what the military terms a technical engineer supervisor, which basically I ran survey crews and quality control on all of the construction projects. I worked for seven years down in Georgia. I worked for seven years down in Georgia at Fort Stewart, just outside of Savannah, 14 years in Germany, and one year in Korea. Since we came back here, kind of, my brother lives here, we used to vacation here. Since we came back here, I've been kind of dragging my feet, but saying I should really get more involved with the city and contribute a little bit more. Devoted a lot of my time to the kids and bringing them up, and now he's going off to college, so that's the last one. Should leave me a little more time where I could actually get involved and do something in the community now. The 10 years since I've retired, I worked for a small consulting firm downtown here. We deal mostly with construction aggregates, mine permitting, sand and gravel permitting, not just in New Hampshire, but New England and all across the United States. We've done one or two different projects in Canada, in Haiti, and the Dominican Republic, not only involving permitting, but also we get into due diligence for acquisitions and mergers. I do a lot of the geologic modeling and 3D modeling, so I make maps all the time. We do a lot of stuff for permitting, dealing with ecological systems, wetlands, and things like that, that I need to map out. And so I kind of thought the planning board might be the best fit for me to get into helping out the community, and then I read in the paper how they were lacking positions, so figured I'd throw my name in the hat.
Appreciate it. Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Beliveau? Counselor Hamel.
Just one, with your busy schedule, you'll be able to attend meetings, or?
Yes. I, fortunately, when I was done with the military and I was taking this job, they told me, you realize you're more in the office. The geologists go out and do their thing. And I said, you know what, after 21 years of deployments in Korea and Germany, I want to spend some time with my family. So, yeah, evenings, I'm free. Daytimes, I work right here downtown, so if I need to take an hour off or whatever, it's fine.
Anyone else? Counselor Lippman.
Just curious if you would mind sharing what the name of the consulting firm is that you work with?
North American Reserve, it's called.
Yeah, it's, I guess, this, I know we had a number of students that were engineering majors, but there's a lot of engineering that happens in this community. It's one of our niche areas, so wasn't aware of that one, so thank you.
Right, and I, I was actually surprised when I came back to the States, and we were renting in Danbury, and I was doing the job search and interviewing, and kind of puzzled me when I sat down with the people at North American Reserve, and they were telling me what they did. And I said, oh, you do all that from this little office in, in Laconia? And they said, yep, we have some guys that spend a lot of time on the road, but we cover the whole United States.
Interesting.
And work for some, some of our clients are some of the biggest aggregate producers in the world, so.
It's a little-known story. Now, now we know.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
All right, no problem.
All right, next up, we are talking reappointment to the planning board at regular position, seeking another three-year term on the board, the current vice chair of the board, and that is Mr. Edwin Bonas.
Hello, folks. How's everybody tonight?
Good, thank you. Good to see you. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you for having me. I'm here for reappointment. I've been there just over two years, I believe. I got a background in construction and real estate. Board's been an interesting, challenging animal, so we've got a lot of work to do, and we're plugging right through it, so other than that, I really have not a lot to offer.
Any questions for Mr. Bonas?
Just a comment. Edwin's, I think he's doing a fantastic job. He's also on the CIP committee.
Yes, sir.
And we'll be back at it again in September, so he does a good job on that, too, so.
Anyone? Short and sweet, I guess. Thanks for coming.
Short and sweet. It's been a blast.
Appreciate your service, sir.
Thank you.
Counselor Lippman. Can we just get a clarification what the openings are on the planning board?
I think there, as your background is for, I'm sorry, there are no vacant regular members, except for the one that Mr. Bonas is up for the reappointment, and there are three vacant alternate, alternate members.
We approve all three of the applicants tonight. At our next meeting, we'll have a full slate of members and alternates, first time in quite a while. So that's, that's encouraging. And speaking of members of the planning board, our next applicant is a recently appointed member of the planning board, who is also now speak, seeking an appointment to the Lakeport TIF Advisory Board, and that's Peter Burnett.
Evening.
Before you get started, Peter, we have, how many? One person on that board now? Do we even have one?
I believe, I, the website says Peter Stewart is on the board.
Peter's on, and I think that might be the only one at this time for Lakeport, yes.
And I'm, I have to admit that, other than the fact that it exists, and what few facts are available on the website, I don't know very much about it, but I live right in the middle of the TIF and zone, and we gotta do something. Redevelopment in that area is tricky, because the infrastructure doesn't really support it, there's a lot of aging structures that can't be easily, if at all, repurposed. So I think it's gonna require some, you know, smarter minds than me, for sure, to do some planning and come up with incentives for investment in that area, and the TIF would be a good part of that.
Any questions for Mr. Burnett? It's a long line of people waiting to serve on that board, so.
Well, I figured it would, it would be an easy one to get, Ed, you know. And I do want to say thank you for appointing me to the planning board. I was not able to sit at the first meeting for which I was eligible, because I think I, as I told you at my interview, that I was in a play that closed Sunday with Counselor Brown, so I will be at the next meeting.
Must have been tough on him, he's not here tonight.
Pardon me?
Must have been tough on him, he's not here tonight.
Well, he's getting a phone call as soon as I get out of here. He, he did encourage me to step up, though, so I did.
Okay, any questions or comments? All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, now we're still on the TIF Advisory Board subject, but we're switching to the Weers, where old friend Russell Poyer is seeking another three-year term on the Weers TIF Advisory Committee. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I, I enjoyed being on the TIF Committee and would like to continue. Enjoy working with Kevin, and Scott, and Joe, and now Ava, and Robert. It's, it's a joy to go to the Weers now and see the improvements that TIF has been involved in, and what we continue to look forward to, the extension of the beach, and talking about the docks. It's a, it's a great project.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Poyer?
Thank you for your service.
We appreciate your service, and I'm happy that you've reapplied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Same goes for our next gentleman, who is also on that board and is seeking reappointment, and that is Joseph Driscoll III.
Doing the Water Commission tonight, though, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wait a minute.
He's wearing his Water Commission hat.
This is for Water Commission.
You are on that board, though, right?
Yes, I am, yep.
I'm sorry.
We'll do that one, too. We can, yeah.
He is on the Weers TIF Advisory Board, but tonight he's seeking a reappointment to the Water Commission for a three-year term.
Correct.
Sorry about that.
Yes, I'm a Ward One resident, 75 Tower Street. Been on the Water Commission for about four years or so now. Find the work to be very meaningful and very purposeful, and it's good to be involved in the health and safety issues for our community, and it's been really good. I think we have an outstanding department, from Seth on down, there's great morale there. It's really a terrific board to serve on, it's a privilege to be on it, and I'd like to continue.
Questions for Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, sir? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate your reaplying. Counselor Hamel?
Yes. Where we're having so many new members on the planning board, and that's a, a board that, you know, you need to know the laws and ordinances and things like that. So in my mind, it would be nice if the planning department dean or whoever could come up with a planning board 101 course on bringing these individuals up to speed.
I think we've talked about getting somebody from the municipal association to do that, have we not?
We do, Mr. Mayor. As part of our dues to the municipal association and being one of the larger communities, we're actually entitled to have NHMA staff, New Hampshire Municipal Association staff, come out and present here for our people, rather than always having to go and attend something regionally or something unconquered. So Dean Trefether, the planning director, and I have talked about, once we get these boards populated, to do it with planning board, zoning board, and conservation commission, and bring in and have a, an in-depth discussion on planning board 101, but land use, you know, land use issues. You know, some of these boards being quasi-judicial boards, their roles and responsibilities as far as, you know, voting and conduct and all of that type of stuff. So we will be scheduling one in the near future, now that we're close to getting these boards populated. And then additionally, there are training opportunities through our membership in Lakes Region Planning Commission, again, through the NHMA, holding some regional type of training available, in addition to the two-day conference that goes on in mid-November every year, which there are a lot of tracks that are down there, and the city's able to support in registration and covering the cost of those fees for folks. Some are on weekdays, some might be weekends, but we're, we're willing to support where they're willing to step up and, and take the opportunity to learn. So we'll have one big one in-house, but we'll support any way we can going forward.
Yeah, that's good, then. It's an important board, so.
Okay, I could claim that I did this deliberately, to see if anyone was paying attention, but I tucked in between a couple of items earlier. I, I failed to ask if there were, is anyone present tonight who wish to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? So if there's anyone with us tonight, this is the appropriate time if you'd like to speak to the council about an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone fit that description? No? Okay. No harm, no foul, then. We'll move on to mayor's report, and a couple of items I'd like to mention quickly. One is, between now and our next meeting, will be Memorial Day. Memorial Day will be celebrated in Laconia on Monday, May 28th, with the traditional parade and short ceremony at Veterans Square, or Veterans Park and Veterans Square. And the parade steps off from, from Wyatt Park at 10 o'clock. And traditionally, the council, or several members of the council anyway, march in that parade. We're welcome to, so you're welcome to join us, be there at 9:30 or so at Wyatt Park to march with the city council in that solemn parade, which comes up South Main Street, to Main Street, pauses briefly at the Main Street Bridge for a ceremony honoring all Navy and Coast Guard veterans who died in service to their country. And then the parade proceeds up to, to the main ceremony at Veterans Square, where there is usually a pretty considerable crowd waiting. And it's quite a little ceremony, doesn't last all that long, and it's something I look forward to every year, so I would encourage not only the members of the council, but the public in, in general, to come out that day and spend a few minutes to remember our war dead. Second thing I'd like to mention, Counselor Bounds isn't here tonight. He has been representing us on the planning board, as we know, and, and in particular, ably representing us with regard to the, the authoring of a new master plan, updating of a new master plan for the city of Laconia. And I can report in his stead tonight that the, the planning board at their meeting last week did approve the first two elements of that new master plan, which will be, will be getting briefed on, I'm sure, at one of our future meetings here, but that was the so-called vision statement, and more importantly, the land use chapter, which is the one chapter that's required to be updated every 10 years by the state. And all zoning comes out of the principles laid forth in that chapter. So if you all haven't had a chance to read that, before we get briefed, I would encourage you to do so. It is a, as Counselor Lippman and I both know from having served on the committee that drafted that or helped in the drafting of it, actual work was done by the Lakes Region Planning Commission. It's a substantial departure from, perhaps you read about it in the paper, from previous master plans. And, and so we're gonna have, over the next few months, a, I think, a considerable community conversation about that master plan and the direction of the city. And, you know, that, that conversation, if at all, is just barely beginning now, as word starts to get out a little bit about what's in the, what's in that vision statement and in that land use chapter, and what, what direction or change of direction it calls for. And I think that's healthy. There was a letter in the paper, and this is where I'm headed on this, two, three weeks ago, from a gentleman from Belmont, a well-respected gentleman from Belmont, who was horrified to read what was in that plan, and, and hoping that Laconia wasn't gonna start a fire that spread to Belmont. That was his big, his big worry there. And, but, so we're, we're gonna get to that and all the details and whatnot, and I didn't want to dwell on that tonight. What I did want to dwell on, though, was a statement that was contained in that letter that's not the first time I've heard, and I know some of you are familiar with this, but this has to do, in my opinion, with the spreading of, of what I would really consider to be fake news. We've heard a lot about fake news in the national, international news in recent times, but he, he made reference to a, a item that's been circulated on the, on the internet that purported to show, I'm not gonna get into great detail about it, was, because it's, in my opinion, is fake news in every sense of the word, but a website called Road Snacks, which should tell you everything you want to know about the authors, a website called, called Road Snacks attracted some attention some, some months ago by publishing a list of what it called the most dangerous cities in New Hampshire. And I know the chief was familiar with it and did some research on this. It's not the first time they've done this, but this is, it's not credible, is, is extremely superficial. It's, it's, anyway, Laconia was on that list, and, and first of all, to, to, to call any city in, in New Hampshire dangerous, I think is ridiculous, relative to any kind of normal standards one could, could apply that word to. I can't imagine there's any municipality in the city of, in the state of New Hampshire that could truly be considered dangerous in any, any real sense of the word. But, you know, as they used to say, figures lie and liars figure, and there's all kinds of ways you can twist statistics to say anything you wanted. For example, if you had one armed robbery one year and two the next, you can say, we went from one to two, or you can say there was a 100% increase in armed robberies. And those statements are technically correct, but it's not the same thing. And so I, I, I want to call people's attention to that, and, and we need to, all of us responsible citizens in the Lakes Region need to stop passing on information like that as it's gospel, and consider the source and how credible the source is or not. And the other thing I would mention, it also works the other way. Sometimes you see these sites saying good things about Laconia and the Lakes Region, and there, what was the one that, that went around here six months ago or so about how we were the sixth richest small town in America, or something like that? And, and it said we had a population of 60,000. Well, you know, we know we don't have a population of 60,000. If you went and looked a little closer, you would see that they were calling all of Belknap County, Laconia is where they got those numbers from. So again, you have to be careful before you start passing things on either good, or either things that either appear to be good or bad. So beware of fake. or bad. So beware of fake news in that area and be responsible. And, and please don't pass on stuff like that without first considering the source. Thank you. Committee reports. I don't think we have any tonight, do we? I didn't wanna say publicly, though, that I will, at this point in time, appoint Counselor Hosmer to take the place of Counselor Bolduc on the various committees for this, this term of the council. That would include a seat on the Public Safety Committee, a seat on Government Operations and Ordinances Committee, and a seat on the Public Works Committee. Those three committees, Counselor, if you would, would put down on your list, and I will, I will ask Counselor Bowens, who has been the temporary chair of the Public Works Committee, to, to continue in that role for the rest of this session. And then the next session of the council, we'll take a look at, at moving some of the new counselors up to chair some of these committees. I'll also note, Counselor, that Counselor Bolduc was also serving as the liaison. You're probably aware to a couple of organizations, all of us have some responsibilities in that area. And the, the two that I'd like to point out is the, the Water Department Board of Directors and, and the Motorcycle Week Committee, those two. You and I can chat about those two at some point in time in terms of briefing, but that, that mainly your responsibility there is just to keep track of basically what's going on in those areas and report occasionally to the council if necessary about things we should be aware of.
Thank you.
I should also add parenthetically, Counselor, welcome on all our parts. It's good to see that, as much as we miss our dear friend, it's good to see a very competent, capable person in that seat as well. I'm sure he would think as well. So, welcome to our, our, our group. Liaison reports. Any liaison reports tonight? I briefly reported on the Planning Board, so I don't know what exaggerated plan is in terms of when that will come to council for a briefing. I should note, though, legally, the council has nothing to do with the master plan in terms of approval. That does not come to the City Council for approval. Under state law, for some reason, that is the purview of the Planning Board, and it stops there. But I'm sure we will get briefed on the contents of it, and you will have a chance to ask questions and whatnot. For some reason, under New Hampshire law, don't ask me why, the zoning changes can't be done without the legislative body, which in case, our case is us, but the master plan doesn't have to be approved by the council. So, I don't understand that juxtaposition, but that's, that's the way it is. Okay. Citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the appropriate time for anyone in our audience tonight to speak who would like to address the council on any matter that is somewhere on tonight's agenda. Yes? If you could introduce yourself, please, and tell us where you live.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Nixon. I live at 100 Windermere Heights. I actually originally came to the meeting tonight to see my son, Thomas Turpin, recognized, but when I saw one of the agenda items, I felt I had to comment on it as well. And I'm referring to the solar system. I am here as a citizen of Laconia, but I, my former position was at the Public Utilities Commission in the Sustainable Energy Division, where we dealt with solar systems and gave rebates and grants and authorized group net metering applications. And so I just wanted to give a brief comment. I didn't have time to prepare any formal comment or go into any detail, 'cause I, again, I was here more to see my son than anything. But I just commend you on getting additional money on that land, whether it's through the lease, through taxes, or through a potential group net metering application or energy contract. But I also wanna caution you at this point to make sure that we are getting the best value for that land and for the solar system that we can. There's several models throughout the state, several towns and cities have entered into agreements with solar developers, and I just wanna make sure that, that Laconia is getting the best value that we can. And I'm, I, I'm, I wanna do additional research, and I will provide additional comment, and I can, but I just wanted to provide that brief comment tonight.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your coming forward. Anyone else wanna comment on a matter that is on tonight's agenda? Oh. Okay. We are to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have a copy that you should have received of my report that said revised on it in your mailboxes. There was really just one change to an invoice under the winter maintenance account, but everything else remained the same to it. So, this is the Financial and Operational Trends Report, which is in your packet for the first meeting of the month. So I'll run through it probably in a little bit more detail with Counselor Hosmer joining us here tonight. So the first item is one of the items that we use when we calculate the tax cap allowance of the additional amount of funds that can be raised through the collection of property taxes with our tax cap and the budget. As we heard earlier tonight, the assessing year does run from April 1st to March 31st. So the clock has just turned over, and we're at the first month of the assessing year. So you can see the net value of new building permits that have been issued in the month of April came in just around 1.4 million. Comparison was about 4.5 million in the first month a year ago, 2.3 million two years ago. Sometimes one month is too early to make a trend. As you recall, we did have a difficult April weather-wise, cold and some significant snow, so I'm not sure if that had anything to do with that. But that's how we track that on a, on an annual basis. Fire and rescue call data, you see a comparison there over the last four years. We continue to be very busy. A high number of the calls are in the downtown area and are medical-related calls. You can see the time of day and multiple calls and those types of statistics there as well. We list the public assistance data from what goes on through the city's welfare department. You can see ebbs and flows for various reasons, impacting different people at different times of the year. You can, again, look at four years' worth of data and see that, you know, pretty much we trend to be seeing somewhere in the mid-30s to the high $50,000 in grocery relief that we provide to those in need who qualify here in the city on an annual basis. Turning the page to the second page of the report, similar to what we do with the fire department, we track police calls, types of calls, motor vehicle stops, warnings, different categories going on there. And again, we track it to the corresponding month of the prior year as well as this year versus the prior year. You can see some hours that some of our volunteers who assist the, the police department provide to various folks and victims here in the community, and that certainly is appreciated. And you can see the types of calls that we receive and where the lion's share are there in domestic disturbances and other disturbances seem to be the key areas there. Property tax collection, we show the, the current year and the prior six years. So you can see that we're in over 98.5% collected on the 2017 taxes to date, and that's collected through the April 30th timeframe. You know, that's a very solid number. Again, when you compare to the prior years, they're all very strong, in that 98% range. Motor vehicle registrations, again, that's running on the city's fiscal year, so that's a July 1st to June 30th. A little historical look back, similar to the trend we saw during the budget discussion tonight when we talked about the citywide valuation had been at the 2.1 billion and dropped down to the 1.8 billion, you know, range. We saw a significant drop in motor vehicle registration revenue in the 2011, 12, 13, into 14 timeframe for a similar reason. People weren't trading in their vehicles, they were holding on to older cars. Older cars cost less to register. As the economy started to come out of the downturn, you saw people in companies replacing cars and fleets. And you can see that number from what we had budgeted in fiscal year 14 at a little over $2 million. To this year's budget, we're at 2.674 million dollars. But yet, if you look far over to the right-hand column, our percent of budget collection is still in that 89% range, which is right in the middle of, of what you've seen. So even though we're projecting a much, a much larger revenue number for this year, we are, we are ahead of target, if you will. We have two months left. We have May and June. So statistically, we should be somewhere in around the 83% to 84% collection rate through 10 months out of the year, and we're running at 89. So we're definitely running strong there. And historically, we see May and June as higher revenue months in vehicle registrations. I believe there's a couple of large leasing companies that a lot of the lease renewals occur in those months. And I think some of them just may be the winter doldrums are over, and people get out there in the springtime and early summer and time to trade the car in. So I think we're in solid shape there. On the next page of the report, which would be page three, we list, you gotta get your magnifying glass out to read everything that we put in there on one page, but we run through all overtime citywide. And I'm not gonna run through the specifics, but happy to follow up with you individually if there are any questions there. Turning to page four, these are the number of facility use requests that our Parks and Recreation Department receives for use of various facilities. In a lot of cases, you see stronger numbers in the, in the July and August timeframe and maybe not so much in the winter months, but we're certainly coming into the time of year when there's more outdoor events going on in a lot of the city facilities. Six months or a year ago, we started, I guess maybe a little longer than that now, we started listing any pending grievances. A lot of times, these move at a snail's pace for one reason or another, so not a whole lot of change. But then again, not a whole lot of cost incurred recently as we're working through, and sometimes the ball's in the city's court, or sometimes the ball may be in a union court and responding to a proposal type of thing. So, those are still out there.
Can I interrupt you for just a half second?
Sure.
So I, we have a case pending from 2015, three years old, where we've spent $2,000 rounded off over a $20 dispute?
It was, it was a dispute of $20, but it was the precedent of what that meant going forward beyond that. So, the city, that's one of those where the city has worked with our labor attorney to draft a memorandum, memorandum to, in this case, it's the fire union, the fire union's legal counsel, and we're still waiting for a response back on that. But yes, it's small dollars, but precedent-wise, it was something that...
How long we've been waiting for a response?
Many, many months, if not a year at this point. So again, it's, some of these things just are not high priority and don't move forward at a rapid pace. But that's a particular situation where the ball is with the fire union at this time. The impact fee revenues, somewhere in around 2009, 2010, the city adopted impact fees and chose to implement them at a 25% rate. And I think we reviewed them at the planning and the city level within the last year or two and decided that was a level that was still appropriate for charging. And the impact fee basically is a charge for new construction when a certificate of occupancy is received for an impact that, in, in the case of a residential property, is paying a fee for all six of those categories. So the residential would be impacting school, police, fire, parks, roads, and library. A commercial application would only be paying for a couple of those, not the school, not the parks, and not the library. So you can see the amount of revenue sitting in each category as it stands today. The second column showing the revenue year-to-date. It's not a great amount of money that's rolling in, but it's trickling in a little stronger now than it was a few years ago. Projects that had already been approved at the planning level and were grandfathered were not subject to the newly enacted impact fees. And again, you collect the fees on, on a certificate of occupancy, which is at the tail end of the project. So, the impact fee, it was meant to be supporting infrastructure and capital investment in those various categories that may be spurred or needed by the, by the impact of that new construction coming online. That's the basis behind them. Turning the page, we have available trust balances in several accounts. I don't want anyone to get excited and think we have over $4 million in the health insurance stabilization. I think we missed a shift key in that four there, it really should be a dollar sign. So if we can correct that number and make it 170,000, we'll lose the 4 million on that. But we have a non-capital reserve account, which typically is set up for small capital items, repairs that may be needed during the course of the year that weren't necessarily known or anticipated during the production of the budget. It could be a failure of an HVAC system or an elevator, it could be a damaged roof or a roof leak situation that, you know, is an insignificant amount of money, and, and we try to, you know, budget and put some money away into that reserve account. So we've got a little bit of a rainy day account, if you will, for some smaller capital items. The council, over the years, has taken some one-time money and funded the accrued leave reserve account, which is for the liability that the city has on its books for time that employees have accrued that would need to be paid out if they retire or leave employee of the city in some cases. We have the winter, uh, winter maintenance reserve account, which this year, as we'll talk about in a minute, we blew through our winter maintenance budget, but in some years, when Mother Nature is a little kinder, the council has seen fit to take money that remains in that account and move it into a stabilization account to, again, kinda be a little bit of a safety net for years when we do have a, a more onerous winter, one way to put it. Health insurance stabilization account, the thought there was when we had some years that either some one-time money returned or we had a, a slight decrease in health insurance. We budgeted some money to go into that account, again, as a safety net to help out and offset some years where we might get a, a high double-digit increase in our health insurance rate. That hasn't happened in many years, but it's there as a safety net. The thought behind these type of stabilization accounts is to try to promote sustainable, predictable budgeting and take some of the spiking out, or all, you know, all of a sudden, you have a high year in health insurance, and you don't have anywhere to go. You might cut out some, some needed programs or capital spending. So this is to try to smooth that out so that we can continue to focus on all areas in the city that are important. And then the Motorcycle Week account, that was set up many years ago to be a standalone. So any city incurred expenses are paid out of that account. Any revenue that's collected for vendor fees and other licensing deals goes into that account, and we do a full accounting of that every year for Motorcycle Week. And we'll have some preliminary numbers, probably the latter part of July, and have those finalized usually by late August or the first, the first meeting in September for you there. You can see the TIF account balances. We have not posted the one transaction yet for the, the TIF share to the Colonial Theater project, so that number will be reflected in the next month's report to that. So it does show a little over a million, but that'll be reduced by the 600,000 that is there. It is boat season. I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that...
Counselor Lippman has a question. Any update on the transaction with respect to...
I don't have anything specific. I think the mayor's gonna address that a little later on this evening.
What am I addressing?
The colonial transaction.
Yes.
Boat taxes. So it is time to register your boats, and not only here at City Hall, but other registered boat agents here in the city can handle it. And unlike motor vehicle registrations, where you have to register your vehicle in the town where you are a resident, City Hall can accommodate your boats and your watercraft here regardless of where you live in New Hampshire. So we're happy to provide that service for Laconia residents and others alike. And I will go out on a limb for this one, that this will be the last winter storm cost summary in the report for at least four or five months. How's that for a bold prediction? How's that for a bold prediction? I did put my shovels away the other day, and I mothballed the snow blower, so I think it's time. But anyway, you could see, we did have that one significant storm in the middle of April, and we were already behind the curve on budgeting there, but that hit us to another 28,000 and change. So you can see, we ran over in all areas of winter maintenance, whether our budget, from the overtime that we target towards it, to our outside contractors who we use to clear some of the parking lots, as well as our general materials, salt, sand, wear and tear, replacement, all that good stuff in the winter maintenance account. So, that is the report you will find for the first meeting of every month, and I'm happy to take any questions anyone may have on it.
Questions or comments for the man? Counselor Hamel.
Not so much related to that, Scott, but a couple of things I'd like to ask about. Is there any schedule yet on doing the repairs on Highland Street? Have we talked to the contractor of when they're gonna schedule to do that?
I don't have an answer for that, but I will get one for you.
Okay. The other thing is the lines painting in the roads, yellow lines. When are we gonna be doing that? Because there's a lot of areas around town, you don't even know which lane to go in. The arrows aren't there.
The long line painting contract is coming...
First of July.
Wow. There's a, it's, it's a struggle every year with few companies doing it, most of them coming from out of state, and...
Is it a money matter or a timing matter?
Money.
So why can't, so why can't we take money from a different account and then pay that back and get it done?
The, as of right now, my budget's $30,000, $4,000 in the hole, and that includes eliminating long line painting till after the first of July. And we usually allocate $20,000 for long line painting. So if we spend it earlier, it's, I'll be $50,000 under, underfunded for the, this fiscal year.
So why can't we, what do we have in contingency? Couldn't we use that and then pay, pay that contingency back?
Well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't...
We're gonna wait till half of the summer's gone, and, I mean, Lakeport Square, you don't know where you're at. The center lines are gone. don't know where you're at, the center lines are gone, the center turn lanes, all around Vet Square, everywhere, all around here, there's no lines.
Some, some of the turn arrows and the crosswalks are done by staff in-house, and we're going around and doing those, but you're right on the long lines.
Yeah, the crosswalks are fine, it's, it's the yellow lines and, and lanes.
We, we can look to use the contingency, I mean, it's, um-
So, I-
There's no sense waiting until the end of summer before you do it.
Yeah, I'm a little, little shocked by this, I mean, I think at our last meeting or the one before that, it was indicated, if I recall correctly, that we, that we anticipated ending the fiscal year with a, a fund balance of $800,000, something in that ballpark?
To add to fund balance.
Ballpark number, yeah, still a couple of months ago, but yes.
We're going to be on the plus side of the ledger citywide by-
That was the intention, yes.
$800,000, so I guess to, to double down on Councilor Hamel's question is, if we're going to have $800,000 left over, why are we, why are we putting off, why don't we just transfer?
We, we can do that, and some of that is from other departments who are underspent for reasons that they don't necessarily have control over, could be their health insurance came in less because of employee change, or it could be some positions weren't unfilled and all the salary didn't get used, so typically, the capital money, the project money, we do spend that. This year, in the Public Works Department, for a number of reasons, including winter, we're struggling to try to come in and, and bring that budget in whole this year. The other point to it is, as the council recalls, we spend $835,000 in the budget we're wrapping up, we took it out of fund balance, and there's always the desire to try to have a similar amount of money returned to fund balance, so at least you get a break even, and we don't go below that seven or eight percent threshold for our undesigned fund balance account, so if we spend 835, but we only have 400,000 rolling back into fund balance, we are decreasing the amount we have in fund balance, and particularly right now, where we have some money out to the Colonial that is there, we want to make sure that we're in a position to cash flow our needs, so several reasons go into that, but that's the answer.
So, I mean, what we're really talking about doing is advancing-
Yeah.
-money from next year, so we can just take 20,000 less than in this budget for next year for that purpose, because we'll have already done it.
I mean, you could take it from the, the capital fund in here, we got 100 and something in there, right?
On capital reserve.
Are you going to be able to find somebody now?
Just put it back.
I'll have to check to see. Typically, we can get somebody about 45 days out, so it'd be about the end of June anyways, probably.
So it's, not going to save us a lot of time anyway.
But I can find out on that piece.
Confirm it up, and if we can get someone here, we'll, we'll do it. We've got to find the money in existing accounts, I don't know if it meets the criteria of what the non-capital reserve was set up, because this isn't really an asset, it's more of an operational expense.
Well, what about the, on the registrations, we have, so was it 75,000 in there, that goes to roads?
It's the transportation-related, and again, we were targeting that to help support a million-dollar bond payment for the-
I know, but we can put it back.
Well, if you're spending it this year, you, you can't necessarily put it back, we might have to find dollars that are available to us in this fiscal year, we can't necessarily pre-borrow money post-July 1, which is next fiscal year, we have to separate, so I'll have Wes find out how soon, we could get someone, if we can get someone here much sooner than the 45 days, I'll bring you an option to find the $20,000 within this operating budget to get it done sooner.
Okay.
Thank you.
The other thing is the, you notice the American flags on up again, and Memorial Day's coming quick, a lot of other communities already have them up, and I'd hate to see another year without them up, which happened once for Memorial Day.
Up where?
All around town, on the poles. American flags they put on the poles.
Will you do that?
Yeah.
There's a volunteer group that does that, it's not the city that has been doing the flags, it's been a volunteer group, so we can reach out to them to see what the status is on that.
Okay, and the other thing is the bump out at Vista that we talked about?
Mm-hmm.
On Union Avenue, I mean, South Main Street, is there anything on that?
We're actually working on the design now.
Okay, very good, thank you.
This is the Vista bump out, so-called, you're talking about?
Correct, it's the, part of the problem with crossing at the crosswalk at Vista is the width of it, and cars try to pass on the right side when someone's stopping, so we're trying to narrow the road up to prevent that.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Unless there's any other questions, I'm good for it.
Any other questions for the manager? Okay, we're on to new business, a whole lot of new business tonight. First up is High Street, request to change parking restrictions on High Street, you have a memo addressed to the city council on page 51 of your packet, and Mr. Anderson, is this in your wheelhouse, are you going to make the case here?
I can. Basically, a resident came to us, and because of problems they've had backing out of their, their property on High Street, and they're in the piece that comes basically between Union and the top of the hill, they're in the steep section, they asked us to change, which is if you're going up the hill towards Highland Street, to change the right side, which is presently posted for two-hour parking between Union and Avery, to no parking, so that way they can park, pull out across the street, get into that zone where people can see them before they straighten out and go up the hill. If they pull out in the downhill lane, there's really no vision for them, someone's coming over the hill, may not have enough time to stop. The rest is just cleanup and looking at it, what we found is actually posted, there's no parking zones up by the hospital going towards High Side, Highland Street on both sides of the road, but we can't find any record, the city council proved it, so we're trying to get, fix that at the same time.
I, well, before I open, anybody want to ask any questions or comments? I, I drove up there and took a look, and I didn't see any sign, I saw one sign on almost Avery Street, there's one sign that says two-hour parking, there's no signs further down the street than that, and on the other side of the street, where I guess parking is permitted now, I didn't see any signs at all.
And checking the, the ordinances, and there's a master one dating back from 1975, the side of the road as you're going up the hill, the two-hour parking, is two-hour parking in the ordinance from Union all the way up to Avery Street, in that same ordinance, it's no parking on the downhill side of the road from Avery Street going towards Union. There is no mention in that ordinance of anything going from Avery towards Highland Street, but it is posted, so we're-
What does it say about the even-numbered side?
On the, the even-numbered side, the side that's on your right as you're going up the hill, is, is in the ordinance, is two-hour parking.
The north side of the street.
It'd be actually the south side. North side is the, the hospital side.
Yes.
Right.
That's the sign I'm asking about.
Right.
Between Avery and Union, what's the regulation now?
It says no parking. It's just not posted, so it's one of the things we've got to fix as part of this process.
Officially, no parking, even though it's not posted, but you have no record that we ever agreed to make from Avery to Highland, no parking on that side of the street.
Correct.
Even though there are signs everywhere for that one.
Exactly.
At all, it's perfect sense.
So one is new and one is housekeeping.
Right.
Questions, comments before we, I'll put to Councilor Hamel, he's the expert in that neighborhood.
I'd go for it.
Was that your ward, or is that your, is that-
That's my ward.
Okay, Councilor Hamel then moves that the odd and even-numbered side of High Street be designated no parking from Union Avenue to Highland Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Haynes seconds that motion. Discussion. Now, we're only talking about, at this point, we're only talking about that portion of High Street, oh no, we're talking about the whole thing, yeah, so this is one fell swoop, we're talking no parking all the way from Union to Highland, on either side of the street. Discussion. Halls in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed, please raise a hand.
Only opposed because I think we ought to just have it sit for, because we're talking about the whole road, what impact that has, I'd like to give them a chance to, the neighborhood to react to it all a bit, but that's fine.
We have four votes in the affirmative, one negative, motion carries, four to one.
And I'll have all the calls referred to you.
I didn't make the motion. I think their home counselor made the motion, that's what I heard.
Like putting words in my mouth there.
Okay, well, that, that was quick, I thought we ought to have some discussion on that. Okay, temporary traffic order, number six, the reason this is before us tonight is because, as opposed to being a, earlier in the agenda, is because this is new, and this has to do with the Celebrate Laconia Parade celebration, is there someone here tonight from, yes, there is? So, Mr. Felch, Tony Felch, could you explain to us where the parade is starting and ending?
Sure can. This year, we're planning on using the high school parking lots for our staging area to get the parade ready to go.
I'm sorry? Move that up, sorry.
The Laconia High School parking lots for our staging area.
Staging area, okay.
And leaving Laconia High School, going down Union Ave to Busy Corner, and then down Church Street to North Main Street, and from North Main down to Opichi. We also have in the order, if you go past Opichi Park, the streets to the right, making that one-way back out to North Main, so we can disperse the floats and, and people there instead of staying on North Main Street.
So say that last part again?
Um-
So, parade officially ends at-
At Opichi Park.
But you need to disperse the parade.
Correct.
So you're going to use the side streets-
Yes.
-to disperse the parade.
Mm-hmm.
So this traffic order covers basically from the high school to the pass to Opichi Park.
Right, and those streets are, let's see if I can find it, Boozill Street, Lewis Street, and Edgewater Ave, that comes right back out to Main, North Main Street.
Any questions or comments before we get to motions here? All right, the order itself is on page 53 of your packet. Thank you. Motion being ordered to approve temporary traffic order number 2018-6 for July 7, 2018, the Celebrate Laconia Parade for the 125th anniversary, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, as submitted. Someone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Councilor Haynes makes that motion, Councilor Hosmer seconds it. Any discussion? Halls in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion carries. Oh, now we're on to a fun one. Options to reduce city's recycling costs, you have a memo in your packet, starting on page 55. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've discussed a couple of times over the past months, I've shared with you our numbers, as well as some anecdotal stories about how the commodity value of recycled materials has really just fallen away to the point where it's a cost, a negative to disposing of material, of recycled materials now, and for the last several months, at a greater rate than we paid to dispose of our municipal solid waste, so right now, we are paying more to get rid of recyclables on a per-ton basis than we are if it all went into the trash and went right down to Penne Cook and it was burned into fuel in the incinerator. A lot of this is driven by a couple of items. China, being the big one, has stopped accepting basically all United States-based recycled material because the quality of the material wasn't as clean and as pure as they are accepted in the past, they become more stringent, so that market has dried up, the capacity to take on those recyclables in other parts of the world has not materialized yet, specifically in New England, the last plant that processed and recycled glass closed, so all glass that is truly recycled in New England now is going to, I think, New Jersey as the, or New York as the closest location?
It's actually going into landfill right now, because it's not-
Someplace is landfill, but if you truly wanted to recycle glass-
Yes, you've got to go out of-
It's going out of New England right now, which if you talk about the value of carbon footprint and the trucking, and let alone the financial implication, is, is not boding well for recycling glass on a number of fronts. A lot of the local processors are taking that glass right now that they're separating in the single-stream facilities, and they're throwing, they're taking it to the landfill anyway, because it's less expensive for them to take it to their landfill than to try to have someone reuse it, in essence, truck it out of New England. There are a couple of small examples that I found in the region where some communities do have some glass crushers that they operate, more in a separating, go down to the transfer station and separate your glass, and employees crushing it, again, smaller communities, smaller quantities, and they're finding some landscape companies that are willing to come in and take the material and use it as a base for certain walkways and that type of stuff, but there's not a strong demand for glass locally being crushed up, so that's one of the drivers, but collectively, when the region's recycled materials go and get processed at Casella's, Casella's facility, they break it down by components, so about 20% is glass, another 20% is paperboard, meaning, you know, your newspaper, your envelopes, your junk mail, your cereal boxes, those types of things, and then there's components of plastic, corrugated cardboard, aluminum, other metals, those types of things. Each commodity has a value, and you blend the value based on the collected tonnage. Right now, you can see in the memo, we're paying over $100 a month, $102 a ton to get rid of it, whereas to take it from our transfer station, put it on a flatbed and haul it down to Penne Cook is costing us less than $90 a ton. So the question number one is the value of recycling, reusing products, not having the strain on natural resources, all of that is very important, but there's also the economic side to it. So staff and I have been discussing a couple of options right now, and for your further discussion, the first one would be the catchy phrase of glass is trash, meaning we would encourage people to be throwing their glass bottles of whatever kind or jars into the trash bag and go to the solid waste stream and not go into the recycling bins that get picked up every other week at your curbside. The second item that we are recommending is to eliminate the city's remote recycling locations that are accessible to anybody 24 hours a day, seven days a week. If you think back a couple of years, when this change hadn't occurred in the solid waste contracts, all of recyclables were basically on a flat-rate basis, it was the cost to send the truck around on the curbside route every week, and it was the cost to send the truck over to the remote locations and pick up that dumpster and offload it, but we didn't pay by the ton for the recyclables because there was enough value in the commodities market for recyclables, we were encouraging anybody and everybody, and we really didn't care who was using our remote recycling locations, as long as they were using them responsibly and not contaminating and throwing a bag of trash or throwing a TV into them, because again, it was a flat rate and we weren't paying by the ton for the material. Now that we're paying by the ton for the material, there could be people from neighboring communities who, for all the right reasons, convenience, they work in town, they shop in town, they're driving by one anyway, want to put their recyclables in there, but if it's costing us that much more to pay to get rid of that, what should we be doing as far as potentially subsidizing folks who aren't Laconia residents and taxpayers in the equity situation that involves? So the talk, the discussion would be about eliminating the remote recycling locations. In exchange, we know that for some of our households and some of our businesses, getting rid of corrugated cardboard seems to be a need, and we would talk about doing a couple of things, one is, at one location, construct a pad and bring electricity to it, and rent on a monthly basis a large roll-off dumpster with a compactor and be able to handle cardboard. In conjunction with that, we would want to be able to have some kind of a repository where people could come, break down boxes, and whenever you look at a true designated cardboard dumpster, there's about a four- or five-inch opening at the top of a dumpster, so a flattened-down box can slide into it and it drops into the dumpster, but somebody couldn't throw a trash bag, a TV, a mattress, or whatever else in and contaminate the load. So we would look to construct something that folks could come in, flatten the cardboard, put it into a receptacle of some kind, and city staff, as demand warranted, would process it and use the compactor and put it in the dumpster, and prices we have right now indicate that the value we would get for the recyclables would offset our cost of- would offset our cost of manpower for doing it and transmitting that cardboard to the facility. So, it wouldn't be a moneymaker. It would be potentially a break-even, but we're able to divert that out of our curbside pickup or out of our trash pickup. So in that sense, we're saving money on the tonnage. If at some point in the future, glass did not become such a money loser, there's always the opportunity to encourage people to put glass back into a recycling bin. If somebody in a household puts glass in their recycling bin right now, we're gonna pick it up and we're gonna take it. We're not gonna reject that load because glass is still accepted at the recycling facility. And we've been training people for years and years and years, you know, please recycle your glass, and this is a switch, but we would encourage people, for the reasons I've stated, to put glass in the trash. So those are the two immediate proposals. When you look at your budget book, as I've already spoken to, you can see there's a several hundred thousand dollar increase in recycling, one of the areas that we're running short on again in the public works budget, not only because of the harsh winter, these costs have been hitting us for the past month, so we're running short in the solid waste budget portion of public works as well. And that's why Wes has been trying to control cost and bring his department in on budget, as we charge all department heads with. So, this is happening. We would like to do something sooner rather than later, because for every week that, or month that we go by, it's just getting us deeper and deeper in the hole. It's not to say that we couldn't look at, you know, other programs going forward, but we think these are a couple of relatively easy, quick fixes that could be implemented. I think the biggest education would be for those folks that those three remote locations are not going to be there anymore. So with that, unless I've missed something glaring, that's the approach that we want to discuss tonight.
So, your recommendation is, let's clarify, it's not the cardboard thing.
Our recommendation is that with some reasonable notice, we are gonna get rid of the remote recycling locations and people will no longer have those available.
Including cardboard.
Include, well, and at the same time, we would be setting up the cardboard location, which would only be in one location, because we're only gonna be renting one compactor. So more than likely, that's probably gonna be at the Messer Street location. We've got an existing building, we've got power, we've got the ability to bring it in. That would be the location that people could drop off cardboard. Again, breaking down boxes, feeding it through a slot, and just leaving it, staff would
But they couldn't put cardboard on the curb.
Cardboard at the curb, yes, they can. Yes, they can. So anybody who puts any type of acceptable recycled material that they're doing today, if they have it on their curbside, if they have glass in the bin and they have a cardboard box, we will take that. We think the cardboard might get used more by some of the area restaurants, furniture stores, some of them, we see a number of them flattening boxes down and putting them in the back of a truck and bringing them over. And again, up until recently, there was no, there was no problem, nobody was doing anything wrong. It's just now the whole commodity value of recyclables has turned upside down financially to a big number, that, you know, we would encourage people to bring cardboard to the remote location, but it's not required. So if anybody has a true recyclable item in their bin, curbside, it will still get picked up. It'll just be the remote locations would go away, and the only thing that we would be handling remotely would be cardboard in one location.
Questions? Counselor Hamel.
So, the only thing that you're not looking to recycle is glass right now. Everything else
For the time being, we could, we could argue there's some other ones, but I think to kick it off and, for the reasons of carbon footprint, and if we're truly recycling glass, it's going out of the region, but we know that people are recycling it and it's our waste handler who's taking it to their landfill. So if they're taking it to the landfill and we're paying more to get rid of it that way, we should just encourage our people to put it in the solid waste stream and get rid of it for less on our own contract.
So glass is going into a landfill?
Right now, the local processor is not taking it and recycling it in most cases, unless a community
But I mean, if it goes to Pennacook, it ends up in landfill?
If it goes to Pennacook, it's in the incinerator. It's, its energy is being burned for energy.
Okay.
But if it's picked up by our recycling contractor right now, and they go to the processing plant, whatever gets kicked out is glass, they are taking it to their own landfill, which they own and control right now. So, we don't want people to think that right now, you're feeling good because your glass is truly being recycled. That's not the case. Your glass, even though you're recycling it, is ending up in a landfill somewhere.
But cardboard is still a commodity?
Cardboard is a commodity that we feel we can process and break even, and if we take it out of the curbside pickup and the city bundles it, we think it can be break-even. We will still pick it up curbside, but then it goes to that tonnage cost that we're paying to dispose of it. So collectively, all of Laconia's materials go get aggregated with everybody else in the region, so there's a blended percentage. So, if nobody else removes glass from the stream and we do it, we're not gonna see a whole lot of savings because everybody else isn't taking glass out of their stream. When, when the recyclables all get to the processing facility, they know it's twenty percent glass, twenty percent this, fifteen percent whatever. So, we want our glass to get out of there, and that will at least help us on our curbside and our remote locations.
Counselor Littman.
So I would move that we accept the manager's recommendation, but I also, in saying that, think we need to continue to monitor it to see whether we can sustain the cost of the recycling program, period, as much as we'd like to, to continue it. It's taken away from other things. We have to reconsider where we're at with it.
Okay.
My motion is to go with the
You wanna make a motion?
My motion is to adopt the manager's recommendation.
Okay, Counselor Littman moves to adopt the administration's recommendation in the area of recycling, but we need to say what that recommendation is. So can you put
Sure, the recommendation is to eliminate the three remote sites, to institute a cardboard recycling central location, and to communicate to the public at large that glass is trash. If I get that right?
You do. It's a catchy little phrase, isn't it?
You all set on that, Madam Clerk? Okay, anyone care to second that motion? Counselor Hamel seconds the motion. All right, discussion is in order now on the motion. Anyone?
How long do you think the phase-out of the drop locations would take?
I would like to do at least four weeks. So if we're in the middle of May, I would say we would want to go to the middle of June or, you know, even potentially maybe till when school is out, although that may not be till August with all the snow days this year. But maybe for the folks who are coming up seasonally, that we carry it through closer to the end of June. So I would say four weeks at a minimum, and we'll do, we'll post appropriate signage at the locations as soon as possible, so people who do go there regularly will see that it's coming to an end. We'll get information out in the Laconia links and on the Channel twenty-five and hopefully get the local media to cover it. But I would think four weeks minimum, just to be, to be fair and give notice.
And how, how soon until you get the cardboard compactor in place?
Unknown at this time, because we're gonna have to build a pad and we're gonna have to get a contract and do electrical work. We're at least thirty, forty-five days out on that.
Could, could almost be a parallel path. And that would be, we'd try to push to that one, identify the site, get the power, get the rental in, and we want to build, we want to build a structure that, you know, kinda makes it that only cardboard can fit in, but is user-friendly for, for folks to go there.
Counselor Hamel.
Have we checked any of the local towns that do the, excuse me, the cardboard banding, compressing? I know Gilmington does it. And did you say Meredith doesn't?
Meredith, yes.
I mean, is it, is it worthwhile doing it?
We think, we think it's break-even. So what we get for the cardboard would pay for our time of getting it there and the labor. But the positive is, if it either gets thrown away as trash or as recyclable curbside, we're paying eighty-something a ton as trash for that cardboard, or right now, a hundred and three dollars as recycling to get rid of it. So if we can get that recycling out of the tonnage and handle it as a standalone, whatever that tonnage is, we break even on as opposed to that tonnage costing us eighty or a hundred dollars a ton. So it's a win in that situation. It's not gonna be a moneymaker on its own, but it's gonna be, it's gonna avoid it being a money loser.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay, all's in favor of Counselor Littman's motion, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, motion carries. Okay, next up, we're to item D, which is a recommendation for prioritizing limited capital road improvement program funding. That is on page fifty-seven of your packet.
Counselor Littman.
I'm not sure this item belongs on the agenda based on what we're looking at for borrowing of two and a half million next fiscal year, and I think the budget proposal I saw had a million, three seventy-five. I'm not sure what we're trying to accomplish tonight.
What we're hoping to accomplish, and I can let Wes speak to it in more detail, is that based on the available funds, guidance to staff as to how we're gonna allocate those funds. So, how many of the dollars available are going to the arterials versus the collectors versus the dead-end cul-de-sacs as a policy, so that when he's working through street priorities, you know, we know that it's a city council priority that the majority of our, of our road money should go to, you know, to the arterials and the collector roads, the roads that are used more heavily, and a lesser portion to some of the side streets and the cul-de-sacs. So it's, it's just some guidance in helping them determine which roads to be presented in conjunction with our pavement management program that we've just done all the road assessments on.
Counselor Littman.
So, I guess two things. One, I think we sat through a presentation of how we're gonna triage roads. I just think a black-and-white policy doesn't fit
Is one.
A black-and-white policy on how we prioritize things doesn't fit with the realities of the city. I do think that what we did look at was a road maintenance program that was looking at the condition of the road and when to make the right investment. I mean, it seems to be contradictory to what was previously presented as the way we were gonna maintain our roads. So I guess, I'm just not prepared to, to hear this out, to, because I want to go back to what we thought we decided a number of months ago, which was that we're gonna look at the conditions of the roads. Some roads are so bad that it doesn't make sense to do it at a certain point, versus some roads are, haven't quite deteriorated to a point where the investment makes sense. And I don't think that's either arterial or whatever. I think we, we came up with a plan, and I think we're changing the plan before we even implemented it.
Well, I think this has been, and I respect your position, I think this is meant to be complimentary, not contradictory to that, but if it's the desire of the council to leave it in staff hands based on the pavement management presentation that we made and make decisions internally based on needs and other projects and infrastructure, water, sewer, utilities going on, we're happy to keep that. So, we can go either way, but we don't view this as something different. We view this as just expanding it a little bit, but we're fine without it. We can certainly make those decisions internally.
I mean, anyone else wanna jump in?
Can I make one more comment? I guess, you know, you just raised a good point, which is, I think, part of the way we've done this is we've looked at what's going on for water projects. I think coming up on the agenda is a sewer project. Again, I think sort of the way we've been doing it makes, makes sense, and the plan that you presented made sense. I think just trying to come up with a black-and-white thing, I'm not so sure. That's my one, one man's opinion.
Anyone else? All right, page fifty-eight calls for a motion to be made. That's why it's on our agenda tonight. It's on the bottom of page fifty-eight. Does anybody care to make that motion? To move that the model for distributing funds among the four types of roads for future planning purposes be adopted. Anyone care to make that motion? All right, the, the initiative dies for lack of a motion. Thank you. All right, we are on to item E, which is a parks and recreation request for funding from the park impact fees fund, I presume that means, for the resurfacing of the basketball court at Levitt Park. Who's gonna, is Kevin here?
Yes.
The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Kevin Dunleavy, Director of Recreation and Facilities. This is, after having some discussions with the city manager, we are planning on resurfacing two, two courts in this fiscal year, Tardif Park and also Sandborne Park in Lakeport. And we thought there was some opportunity to take advantage of having a contractor available to do the Levitt Park basketball courts, which were originally proposed in the capital improvement program for next fiscal year. So we thought there'd be some, some cost savings by utilizing an existing contractor. And also, we recognize that there were some funds available in the park impact fees that are under a deadline for, that need to be expended after a certain amount of years, if I'm not mistaken on that. And we also had two additional funds that we had in place that have been kinda lingering funds that were, that were utilized to receive revenue for past basketball tournaments and donations to the parks that would be nice to, to put into something that applies to what those accounts were originally set up for. So the combination of those two existing funds and park impact fees to complete the resurfacing of the Levitt Park basketball courts. And the Levitt Park basketball courts are really the last court that we have in the city that hasn't seen a recent resurfacing or reconstruction. So it would put us in a good position for the future, and then we can get into a, you know, a handful of years down the road. We can implement a program where we can start the process over again.
So as Kevin had mentioned, this was an item that was in the department request for the budget we're working on, and the funds weren't available for it. So when the conversations of, we've got a contractor already coming to do two courts, let's cobble together some funds, let's get it done this year, took it, didn't fund it in the future budget, found a way to cobble some purposeful funds for this reason, get it done a little later on this spring, and
Makes sense.
Get it done, as they say.
So the total is twenty thousand roughly? Where's the total?
No, the, all I'm looking to request from the city council is six thousand, not all, but it's six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents from the impact fees. There, and then also to repurpose two other funds and put it towards what we're calling a basketball resurfacing fund. So basically repurposing, re, what's the best word?
Transfer.
Transferring, transferring.
So on the bottom
So, when you add up those four numbers, that comes to roughly twenty thousand dollars.
No, the bottom, the bottom
The bottom number is the total. So when you look on fifty-nine, the bottom number is the total of those three. So it's just under ten thousand dollars in available funds that we would just repurpose.
So it's gonna cost, that's what it's gonna cost to do Levitt Park?
Correct.
Ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
All right, any comments, questions, before we get to motions? All right, motion being ordered to approve the request of transfer from the following accounts to fund the cost of resurfacing of the basketball courts. Is it courts plural or is it only one, isn't it?
It's a, it's got two courts, but it's one facility.
Basketball courts at Levitt Park. And that is to use from account five zero dash three zero one dash zero zero one dash zero 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 zero, impact fees for parks, a total of six thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-four cents, from account number eighty-four dash three zero one dash one eight five dash zero zero zero, summer basketball, one thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-six cents, and from account number eighty-four, three zero one, one eight four, zero zero zero, Opichi Levitt Field renovation, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars even. Those three sums of nine thou, those three items totaled in nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which would be the total transferred into account zero one dash four nine seven dash four seven nine dash zero 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 seven, basketball resurfacing. Correct?
Correct.
Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Hosmer makes the motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All's in favor, please raise a hand. Five in the affirmative, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Okay, we're to item F, resolution number twenty-six. That is on page sixty-one of your packet, qualitative to the sanitary sewer supplemental appropriation. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in some of the major construction projects, including Court Street, So, in some of the major construction projects, including Court Street, we're looking to do some additional sewer work this fiscal year as opposed to next fiscal year. So, even though the complete road reconstruction on Court is running from Fair Street down to just before the bridge, you'll notice that there's a fair amount of excavation happening on the Main Street to Fair Street part of Court because we're trying to tie a lot of the sewer work up right now and be done with the sewer component. So, it's more or less that some of the funds would have been requested in the future budget. We're looking to accelerate that to get the appropriation in this fiscal year so the work can be encumbered and the project can go forward sooner rather than later. So, again, the sewer fund, sanitary sewer fund, is an enterprise fund, so this changes nothing with the tax rate, with the budget, with next year's budget. It's just the appropriation needs to be made so that funds can be expended beyond what was adopted in the budget last year. So, this would go to a public hearing because in essence, we are, not in essence, we are doing a supplemental appropriation to the budget strictly for the sanitary sewer account. So, the request tonight is that you read the motions, read by title only, move this to a public hearing in two weeks where you could have a public hearing, a second reading, and a vote, and that just allows us to accelerate a couple of these projects, get them working in this fiscal year.
Questions before we get to motions? None? All right. First motion being ordered would be to move away, to move to waive the reading of resolution twenty-six in its entirety and to read the resolution by title only. Counsel Hamill makes the motion. Counsel Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All who's in favor of reading by title only, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries. Next motion to be in order would be to waive the first reading of resolution, to waive the resolution? Weave the reading of the entire? Oh. We've already, we're not waiving the reading of the resolution. We're passing the resolution on first reading, are we not?
Yeah. Just be a move, there.
We move to adopt a resolution on first reading, resolution two thousand eighteen dash twenty-six, a resolution relative to the supplemental appropriation sanitary sewer fund. So, we're adopting this on first reading, knowing we require two readings.
Yes.
Someone care to make that motion?
Yeah.
Adopted on first reading. Counsel Hamill, seconded by Counsel Haynes. Any discussion? All who's in favor of adopting a resolution on first reading, please raise a hand. Five in the affirmative, the motion carries. And then, lastly, a motion being ordered to schedule a public hearing on resolution twenty-six for May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, during the regular city council meeting to gather input prior to second reading adoption. I have motion, Counsel Leibman, seconded by Counsel Cheney. Any discussion? All who's in favor of scheduling a public hearing, please raise a hand. Five in the affirmative, that motion carries. Thank you. All right. So, that will be hearing and adoption on second reading will be on our agenda on the twenty-ninth. All kinds of fun things to write here. Okay. We're on to item G. Request from the Conservation Commission to increase the funding cap of monies from current use tax that flow into the Conservation Commission land use tax fund from two hundred and fifty thousand dollar total to four hundred thousand dollar total. And who's going to speak to that? We have somebody from the Conservation Commission here tonight?
We do not, but I can speak to that, Mr. Mayor, if you like.
You're on.
So, this request came from the Conservation Commission to me. You can see in the background that back in two thousand and three, the city council adopted by resolution to establish a fund in which the land use changed taxes would be placed, and they capped it that the first hundred thousand dollars would flow into this fund, and then that's where it would be capped, that anything further would flow into the general fund. In two thousand and six, the council voted to increase that amount up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The request from the Conservation Commission is that they're currently looking at some properties that have some high value, and have indicated that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars may not be enough money for controlling these properties. So, the request is to go to four hundred thousand dollars. I put in there that all property purchases that are recommended by the Conservation Commission are subject to the approval of the city council, so final authority does rest with this body. And just for some background, I just put the amounts that the city received from current use taxes from two thousand and thirteen up to and including to April thirtieth of this year, two thousand and eighteen. So, you could see it's ranged from a low of zero one year or six thousand one year. More of the norm seems to be in the thirty to fifty, sixty thousand dollar range annually. So, right now, the Conservation Commission, that, I'm sorry, that account has the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it, so any of the money that was
Has had for how long?
I think a couple of years now. So, any of the money that you saw probably in sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen has flowed into the general fund.
Questions? Counsel Leibman.
I'm just, I think if we, if there's a specific situation, we're not precluded from considering other funds, but given the fund balance situation that we're trying to work on to improve, I, as much as I'd like to do it, I think rather, if there's a strategic property that we need to consider, then, you know, consider that on its merit as opposed to just generally parking on a way there.
Questions? Anyone about what's being proposed here?
I agree with Henry, and also, there was an article in the Sun not too far back where, I may have the number wrong, but something like thirty-five to forty to forty-five percent of the city's land is in this kind of a conservation where it's not taxed at its proper value. So, why do we want to keep adding more?
Thirty-five percent of the land in the city is in conservation easement?
Or that other, what's that other thing named?
It's in current use, but there's a, there's a big difference between current use and conservation.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But I do, well, I guess, well, anyone else before I get in here? So, we don't know, am I correct in assuming, we don't really know how much money, with that current cap of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we don't really know how much money has been since two thousand and three, or two thousand and six, I guess, was the last time it was changed.
Correct.
How much money has been passed over since two thousand and six because they were tapped out in terms of what they can
Yeah. So, we've got it, we've got it back to two thousand and thirteen. We could go back to two thousand and three and give you a sense of when it
Two thousand and six.
Yeah.
So
It was two thousand and six, yeah.
Just to add to something that Counsel Leibman said there a second ago, I, the timing on this is a little awkward from a standpoint that I alluded earlier to the fact that we're going to have this significant county, community conversation in the coming months about the new master plan and what it calls for and whatnot. And since that, that land use chapter specifically calls for more intense development of areas in the, at least the near north part of the city, this policy could theoretically be at odds with the city master plan in terms of trying to put more city land into conservation easement than is already there. And certainly, one of the conversations we've had at the steering committee level, master plan steering committee level, between planning board members and city council members was the fact that that particular part of the city has a number of state forests in it, that a good portion of the land going out for a road is already protected in conservation easement by the fact that it's state forest. I can't remember how many parcels there are off the top of my head, but there's a bunch of them out there that are already protected. So, I don't have anything against us in principle, but I do think that it ought to, in theory, at least match up with what the master plan is going to end up calling for by the time all is said and done.
As I say, this was a request from the Conservation Commission, and I said I'd be happy to place it on the agenda so I can report back to them. That maybe it's a little premature right now that we want to get through the community discussion and, or if there's
I guess that's my input. I would like to, you know, unless they're, and they will have the opportunity during the, during the master plan process to voice their opinion on any particular tract of land or tracts of land that they have there. I know they're looking out around, what's the pond?
Pickle Pond.
Pickle Pond. Out in that area, that they've got their eye on some land out in that area, and that's not real close to where areas have been talked about in terms of possible future development potential. So, I don't see an issue there, but there could be some other parcels of land where we are looking at potential development, where they would also have their eye on, and we, I think we should, there should be a meeting of the minds on that.
I'd be happy to pass that along, or also let them know if they do have a particular property that they think has high value, that we can have a non-public and for the purpose of discussing real estate transaction, and they can present it even if it might exceed their available funds and put it out there for a conversation.
So, what would be the will of the council? First of all, I want to give anyone here an opportunity to make the motion that's suggested on page sixty-two, if you want to, if you want to move on this tonight, now would be the time to do it, to adopt the motion as it's being proposed. Anyone care to do that? I don't see any volunteers. All right. So, do we want to, do we want to table this, or what, how should we handle that?
Lack of motion.
What's, Counsel?
I think the manager's suggestion of just, not at this time, but if that they have an interest in the particulars of property that they need to discuss, well, that's in a non-public session as an acquisition, they have that opportunity.
All right. So, I'm going to declare that the motion has not been put on the table, therefore, the initiative dies for now where it is with the understanding that the city manager, as Counsel Leibman said, is going to speak to the chairman of the Conservation Commission and relay the sentiments of the council at this point in time. Everybody fine with that? Oh, it just keeps getting better here. First half sewer warrant. This is what you all signed up for, isn't it? Okay, we're on page sixty-four. And we have the first half sewer warrant, and everybody has to sign that. Who has the original? You do? Okay. All right. So, we need a motion to approve, and then each counselor has to sign it. We need to, a motion to approve the two thousand and eighteen first half sewer warrant. Counsel Leibman?
I'll make that motion.
Is proud to make the motion to approve the sewer warrant. Counsel Hamill is proud to second that motion. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries, and starting with Counsel Hosmer, we will circulate the warrant for your signature.
Maybe Scott will want to talk about it, because they may not know.
All right. We're down to I. And that is a proposal to name the city council chamber in memory of Counsel Armin Boldik. Any questions before we get to motions? I have one question here before we do, and that is, it has been suggested on page sixty-six that we name this Chambers, plural, and I think that properly it should be, there's only one, so properly, to me, it should be Chamber. Anybody have any question about that? All right. Counsel Hamill moves to approve the naming of the city council chamber, room two hundred A at Laconia City Hall in memory of Counsel Armin Boldik, to be called the Armin J. Boldik City Council Chamber. Is there a second? Counsel Cheney seconds the motion. Discussion. Want to say something?
No, I just think it's very appropriate. Armin served thirty-four years here and dedicated his life to the city, and I think it's a very appropriate thing to do, and his family agrees, because I've talked to them.
Amen to that. Any further discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I assume we can figure out the appropriate time and place to put some sort of a plaque up or something or other?
Yes, we will work on a template for people to weigh in on and get that working.
Okay. Great. Now, I congratulate the council for taking this very appropriate action. All right. We are finally finished with new business, and we have two items of unfinished business. One is the city employees covered by the wage and compensation plan. You will recall, all of you will recall, except Counsel Hosmer, that the city manager proposed, or put that proposal before us for information purposes at our last meeting. We have thirty days under city statute to reject this plan if we so desire it is not necessary, although it is customary, that we approve it. But typically, the council has approved these suggestions if it's the will of the council to signal that it is on the same page with the city manager in this regard. So, the proposal put forward and explained last time is on page sixty-seven and sixty-eight of your packet. So, we're basically talking now about the will of the council, whether the council wants to go on record as approving the city manager's plan in this area. Is there anyone, any discussion before we get to motion? Questions? All right. So, we all know what we're talking about. So, a motion being ordered to approve the amended city employees, the plan for city employees covered by the wage and compensation plan as presented by the city manager on May fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Care to make that motion? Counsel Hamill, is there a second? Counsel Leibman seconds the motion. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Last up, a request to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with New England Solar Garden in partnership with Novus Engineering and New England Commercial Solar Services for the purposes of creating a solar array on the site of the former landfill located on Route eleven B under the terms of the proposed land lease. I refer you to page seventy in your packet, and I will note for the record that we have two gentlemen joining us this evening on this topic, Ted Van Sant and Clark Fenner. And you want to start out?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this information preliminary started, preliminarily started with the city council a few weeks back, where we brought you the results of the city going out for a request for proposals on two parcels of land in the city, one being the fifty-nine acres out on eleven B, which is a capped landfill. The second one was approximately a two-acre site, I believe, on the old Frank Bean Road burn dump, in which the city in the past couple of years had acquired some structures, raised them, and brought in the clean fill, and now has combined the lots into one lot. We went out and advertised for proposals of basically any type of a non-invasive, in-the-ground use, proposals that would be suitable for being placed on a capped landfill or a burn dump that had a couple of feet of clean soil on it and not looking to, you know, disturb the earth in those areas. We only received one proposal, so we received a proposal from one firm on both sites, and the Frank Bean site, in staff opinion, was only going to generate a couple of thousand dollars a year because it's only two acres, and we thought that for a couple of thousand dollars a year, we might have a higher and better use for those couple of acres, which sit up in an industrial zone, comes up behind the Laconia Ice Arena, sorry, the Merrill Fay Ice Arena, and for what we thought was short money, we didn't want to lock ourselves into it. We thought the proposal that we received from New England Solar Array and Novus Engineering on the fifty-nine acre site lent itself to a decent revenue stream between a lease and a payment in lieu of taxes, and was in the area of, the number's there, I think it's around forty-five thousand dollars a year for a twenty-year lease with a couple of extensions to make it go out thirty years, and there's also the possibility for some savings through net metering on the kilowatts that are produced there based on city or school or water department usage and those types of things, as some additional revenue. But what we know is certain is the lease arrangement for the amount that would be paid for the lease and the payment in lieu of taxes, and And Wes Anderson and I, public works director and I, went out there and met with Ted Van Sant a couple of Fridays ago, so that I could at least walk the site. It's what you would expect from an old landfill. It's, you know, capped area, there's some tree growth in certain areas, there's some buffers around it. We were very pleased to speak to the direct abutter, who came out and saw us there, and were very pleased that she did, and we engaged her in a good conversation. Her first name is Franca, and I'm drawing a blank on her last name right now. We also, I also did pass along my business card to her, because that's the area that abuts it, is the Governor's Crossing Development, which is in forming the Homeowners Association, and she indicated that her husband was involved in that, and they were having a meeting on that Saturday. So, I said, here's my card, if anybody's interested in having us come, if you would like us to come at a date future, we can meet people out there who are interested in talking, we can talk about height, we can talk about numbers and all that good stuff. So, have not heard anything back from that one person, but again, that was the direct abutter there right now. From my personal standpoint, I think the, the two companies involved look like they'll be workable with how they place the arrays and try to have less impact, doing some of the single panels, which run maybe five to six feet tall, in the areas that maybe are a little more potentially visible, and on some of the downside slope away from the neighborhood, they could stack two of the panels and not have the impact of that being ten or eleven feet tall. Also, talked about working with the neighbors about possibility of adding some additional natural screening. There's some white pine that's placed there right now. We could talk about white pine, we could talk about some sections of fence, if that was preferable. And based on the way the landfill sits, coming in on the Governor's Crossing Road, the panels would actually be facing away from the street and the properties that are there, because that's the southern or the more southwestern exposure. I think I've got that right. And the, and Ted, who was with us from New England Solar Array, even indicated they could probably string some kind of a camouflage fence on the backside of the structure that holds the panels, just to, again, kind of minimize whatever visibility was there. So, I can turn it over to those folks for questions. In your packet tonight, we did, I did ask you to put this on for tonight, but to table it to your meeting in two weeks, just so we can continue to get word out to the public, to get input from folks who are interested, or if there was an opportunity to set up a time for people to meet out there. It's gotten some play, and again, we made that one contact, but we certainly, I certainly think this is a good project in terms of reuse of a site and some revenue, and, and very little impact into a neighborhood, and it sounds like developers are willing to work to whatever needs to be done to satisfy people. But again, it's something that I don't think we should be rushing either, so I think a couple of weeks would, would be warranted.
Councilor Lippman?
I agree with the approach, but I also would like to, I think we had some public input tonight from someone who worked, worked with the Public Utilities Commission, like to give them an opportunity to-
Absolutely.
-speak a little bit more to the situation. I, I do think it's a good project, but I just want to make sure that, from a due diligence standpoint, we're being treated fairly relative to other-
Right. And, yeah. Happy to, you know, like I say, we put the information out, it's, and I heard and I appreciate our concern of, do we have the best deal? You know, I hate to say it, this was the only, this was advertised, and this was the only proposal that came in, so is it the best deal, or is it the worst deal? In comparison, I don't know for our site, because we received just the one. But, we didn't limit it just to solar arrays, we were allowing people to be creative, to put something on a slab, storage units, you know, other things that potentially could be there. We didn't limit it just to, to solar arrays, and this was the only response that we've gotten. So, but again, I think, you know, we welcome all input from people who, who know more about it than I do, or than most does.
Certainly, there is a market test of everything. Any questions at this point?
So, we do have folks here from New England Solar Garden, who can answer questions on anything from height and sound and distance and whatever, if, if so be, they volunteered to be here.
What is the lay of the land there in terms of topography?
Speaking from our access point on the backside of Governor's Crossing, it kind of slopes up, kind of levels off for a bit, and then drops probably a little bit more steeply down the southern side of the hill, I would describe it. It's, it's more of a elongated football field shape, so definitely rectangular, down, not quite down to eleven B, but the, the narrow part, if you were standing on eleven B and trying to find out where it was, that would be the narrowest part, so it's a very long rectangle coming in. There's a lot of natural growth in the area, and even when we were out there a couple of weeks ago, most things weren't even budding yet. And even trying to look for the landfill back to where the future development would be, there was some good natural screening, and this was first of May? When we were out there, first of May?
Yeah, about that.
Okay. So, things really hadn't even burst yet.
So, is it covered with saplings, or what?
Nope. We, we need to mow it, so we actually go out and mow it twice a year, because we don't want the saplings to go in and get the roots down and start disturbing the cap, so the city does spend some staff time and expense twice a year to go out and mow. Like I say, there's natural buffer, and on the, on the southern side, there is no other abutter that you can see any structure or anything. I mean, there, there's obviously landowners over there somewhere, but there's nothing in terms of abutters on that, on, on that entire southern side of it. And then down to eleven, toward eleven B, it doesn't get down anywhere near to eleven B. We could hear cars going by, but you really couldn't see the cars. Wes has indicated that if you, you know, came from one direction and craned your neck and knew where you were looking at a given moment, you may be able to, you know, pick it up going thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, and maybe Councilor Hosmer will try that on the way home tonight. But, we don't think there's any impact there as well. And even the impact to the neighbors during construction is minimal, because most of these are going to be poured into individual slabs, no heavy equipment, no noise, constructed on individual pads, so to speak. And the maintenance going forward is, again, some occasional mowing and maybe some occasional maintenance on a solar panel, but no noise, no activity there on a daily basis. It's got a lot of positive attributes in that end as well.
So, in anticipation, in anticipation of the possibility of talking about this again in two weeks, do any member of council have some concerns, specific concerns they would like to have addressed in that two-week period of time, answers to questions?
More questions of our guest here tonight?
Councilor Hamel?
Well, I just thought, since they've been sitting here through the whole meeting, you know, maybe they'd like to come up and talk about the project a little bit, or, you know, timeframe, how long it'll take, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
The equipment they'll need out there, or-
Good evening. I'm Clark Fenner with New England Solar Garden. Ted Van Sant, Social, or Solar Services?
Yes.
Couple of questions have been raised relative to-
You moved the mic, too.
Sorry. Say it a little better.
Thank you.
Sorry. Couple of questions have been raised regarding the, the economics of these projects, and there was concern raised that you do, do, need to do some due diligence on this aspect of, of the proposal that we did submit. Couple of things to point out, other surrounding states do have fairly significant solar incentives, which raise the revenue level of solar projects, most notably Massachusetts. The fact that you only received one proposal is because most of the solar companies are used to the Massachusetts model. And when you come to New Hampshire, we have to survive strictly on the revenue generated by the power gener, uh, power generation itself. Recently-
Versus having a, an incentive from the state-
Correct.
-we wouldn't have. The other places, you know, Massachusetts specifically has a pretty significant incentive for building solar. We don't have that for this scale of project.
And just to give you a, a relative example, EverSource recently lowered their default service rate down to seven point nine cents per kilowatt hour from eleven point six, a significant reduction. The new smart program, which is coming into effect down in Massachusetts, depending on the type of project you're putting together, you can raise that up to twenty-seven cents a kilowatt hour. So, you compare what we have right now, we have to model financially at seven point nine cents, and we have to attract investors in order to put that money up. We, as New England Solar Garden, have been successful at doing that, but most people take a look at the economics up here and they go running back to Massachusetts. So, yes.
So, I guess, from the PUC, New Hampshire perspective, I think within our market would be reasonable to do due diligence that within the New Hampshire market, we're being reasonably, fairly treating one another, I guess?
Oh, absolutely, and, and I do suggest you do your own analysis there. In the, when the net metering agreement, or that program was initially introduced into the state of New Hampshire, there were, on smaller projects, individual incentives, commercial and industrial incentives that you could qualify for. And as long as you kept the project small, you could effectively buy down the cost fairly significantly. Those are gone, particularly for projects of this size, they just don't exist. So, again, we are, are in the position where we have to make the economics work based on the power generation at a low rate. That's one thing. As far as the, what it takes to get from where we are today to where you start receiving a lease payment, our leases are based on the first payment, it's a lease option agreement, and you receive your first annual payment, and we do pay annually, before we go into construction. So, the moment we exercise the lease on, on the option itself, then we go ahead, we make that first annual payment, and looking at where we are today, we have secured funding for this project, should you decide to go ahead with it. Engineering-wise, we have the ability through various aerial surveyors to do groups of projects, and we recently, in the month of April, did groups of projects in this area, so we had them fly your area. And so, we have the basic information to begin the engineering. All that being said, depending on how long it takes to get a site plan approved through the city, and how often you meet during the summer, you could potentially get into construction before the end of this year, sometime next fall, which is when you'd receive your first annual lease payment.
Councilor Hamel, did you-
If the state at some time in the future decides to do an incentive program for solar fields or whatever, and would you qualify for that if it was already built, or-
No.
-it has to be at the time of construction?
At the time of construction. Generally, the way these are financed is that once you lock down the financing for these, investors don't like change, regardless of what it is. It could be much better, but they'll just bring in different money for the new program.
If you should at some point make more money on the per-kilowatt hour of electricity sold, would the city benefit on that, too, or?
Depends on how we discuss the initial contract. We have to balance it, because, again, financial people deal in certainty, and they're willing to take a certain amount of risk, and both upside and downside, so we can discuss that as we get further into the lease discussions.
Okay. Is, is this what you're planning to build over there? Is that a substantial amount of solar arrays, or?
Yeah. The new net metering program, which has been passed, it's actually Senate Bill four-four-six, recently passed by both the House and the Senate, it's now on its way to the governor, that allows us to go to net metered projects up to five megawatts in size. This is four point four megawatts. So, it'll be a single project, which helps us, we're going to have to do multiple smaller ones, otherwise. And you do have two parcels, but because now we're up to five megawatts, and we expect the governor to sign that, so under those conditions, it'd be a single one, cost would be a little lower, which would be good.
Are these stationary arrays, or are they self-tracking?
They'll be stationary.
Sure, okay.
Generally, as we get further north, when you start getting into moving parts with the snow loads, it gets to be a little questionable from long-term reliability.
Do these arrays, do they put out a, a glare at all that would obstruct, hurt anybody, or?
No.
I mean, not hurt, but I mean-
That, that comes up a lot, and actually, you'll find, there's a lot of solar program, or solar projects around airports, and you'd think that pilots are probably the worst, you know, the people most concerned about it. And, and if you also think about, what is the purpose of a solar array? It's to absorb energy, so.
So, it's not much glare that come off of them?
No.
And specifically, as Mr. Meyer said, this site faces in a, to a place where there's nothing there, it's just woods to the southeast.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Just one last thing, the last page of your agenda packet shows a, I guess it's a Google map on, that is necessarily a hundred percent to the exact location, but that's the, the rough design on how the array would, would be sited, and again, there's some flexibility there. They can't place some of the panels on real steep slopes, so they've got to work with the contour there, but you can kind of get a sense from even within the property line and how far it sets back, and then where closest structures are. So, it is, there's some significant setback and some natural tree and scrub growth there already. And if everybody wants to, anyone on the council wants to connect and go out there over the next week or two, we're happy to meet with you and take a field trip.
Okay. Motion be in order to table agenda item unfinished business twenty-one B to the May twenty-ninth, two thousand and eighteen city council meeting to allow additional time for public awareness and a butter input. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Lippman, and all those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that is tabled to our next-
And we'll just ask, if you have any questions, get them to me sooner than later, so that if we do take this up in two weeks, we hopefully have had a chance to address questions or concerns in advance of that. Thank you.
Council comments. Councilor Hosmer, this is the part of the meeting where any councilor who wants to have their say about anything is welcome to have the floor. Thank you. Anyone tonight on council comments?
Are you going to comment? Mayor, in a non-public?
We're going to need to have two public, two non-public sessions tonight, so we're going to go, both of these, they're separate items, unrelated, but both of them fall under item C, under RSA ninety-one A, matters which discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or the agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting. For the public's sake, I do not anticipate that the council is going to take any further public action tonight after these non-public sessions. So, I'm going to, a motion be in order to go into non, for the council to go into non-public session according to RSA ninety-one A three, paragraph two, item C. Have that motion, please. Councilor Lippman, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Councilor Cheney?
Yes.
Councilor Bounds? Councilor Lippman?
Yes.
Councilor Haynes?
Yes.
Councilor Hamel?
Yes.
Councilor Hosmer?
President.
Mayor Engler?
Yes. All right. We are in non-public session. We'll wait for the room to clear.